To the April 23, 2019, meeting of the Manatee County School Board. I'm going to ask you all rise, if you may, and join Vice Chair Gina Messenger in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Gina Messenger. We now are going to celebrate our All-State Musicians, and we have the F1 and School National Championship Team with us. Mr. Barber, if you will, please provide introductions.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know you all had a very weighty School Board Agenda, a lot of serious topics on it, so it's time to just sit back and relax and appreciate the reason why we do all of this, and that's for students like these. Our first group is a group of talented musicians and singers. They've earned All-State Status, and to tell us more is our District Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Specialist Julie Abear. So, Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Good evening Chairman Minor and Superintendent Saunders and members of the Board. This evening, it is my privilege to introduce you to some of our most outstanding young musicians who were selected for All-State Music Ensemble Participation in 2019. The Florida All-State Music Ensembles are auditioned ensembles hosted by the Florida Music Education Association. Each year, musicians in grades four through 12 are invited to audition for spots to perform in the All-State Ensembles. In 2019, approximately 1,000 students from Florida's 67 school districts were selected for participation in the 21 various All-State Ensembles. Forty-two of those students were from the School District of Manatee County. Excuse me. Final concerts were presented at the Tampa Convention Center for an audience of close to 3,000 attendees, and this evening, I am proud to present our All-State Musicians who performed in the various middle and high school bands, jazz bands, orchestras, and the digital music showcase. At this time, I will call the students forward, and assisting me is Mrs. Kim Evans. She is the band director at King Middle School. She's going to help me pass out certificates. Our first recipient from Rallett Middle Academy is Jimmy Ackles. And Kevin Chuffloke from Johnson Middle School. Lenora Galazowski from Brayden River High School. William Grant from Buffalo Creek Middle School. Aiden Abear from Hale Middle School. Eric Miller from Lakewood Ranch High School. Angel Potter from Hale Middle School. Benjamin Russasco from Lakewood Ranch High School. Emily Shepherd from Lee Middle School. Danae Tran from Manatee School for the Arts. And I'm going to ask the students to stand in place for one moment as we continue into the next portion of our recognition, and that is the Music Enrollment Awards. Awarded annually to middle or high school music programs demonstrating high enrollment in music courses, this award recognizes the effectiveness of programs that offer attractive music curricula, as well as those that excel in the recruitment and retention of students. To qualify for this recognition, at least 30% of the school population must be enrolled in music courses at the high school level, and 45% of the school population must be enrolled at the middle school level, as reported at the time of the October FTE count. In 2019, 17 schools in Florida earned the Music Enrollment Award. Three of those 17 schools are from the School District of Manatee County. The first school recognized by FMEA with a 2019 Enrollment Award is Lakewood Ranch High School, with 33% of their students enrolled in music courses. The Lakewood Ranch High School principal is Dustin Dahlquist. Music teachers are Ron Lambert, Kristen Green, Dan Schaefer, Giselle Panagiotakis, and Rebecca Lester. I like to call Lakewood Ranch High Schools forward. The second earning, the second school earning a 2019 FMEA Enrollment Award is King Middle School, with 52% of their students enrolled in music courses. The principal is Kristen Kryling, and music teachers are Kim Evans, Fernando Vera, and Robert Medlin. And I welcome King Middle School forward. And the third school earning a 2019 FMEA Music Enrollment Award is Johnson Middle School, with 69% of their students enrolled in music courses. The principal is Anthony Lasada, and music teachers are J.R. Boatright and Joe Stone. And at this time, if there are any other music teachers in the room with All-State students, we invite you to come forward for our photo with the School Board. I know they're in the back. Come on down. Oh, and I'm so sorry, before I close, I would also like to mention that three other schools in our district have earned the Enrollment Award in 2018, and they'll be eligible for renewal in 2021. Our other FMEA Music Enrollment Awardees from this district are Lee Middle, Hale Middle, and Nolan Middle, and we're proud of the efforts of the administration and music faculty in all of our music enrollment awarded schools, and we're so happy that their creative scheduling provides so many students with the opportunity to participate in high-quality music programs. Thank you.
One, two, three.
When am I getting my leech nuts?
We have a very poor crop.
That means they're not going to fall all over your place.
Huh?
Not going to fall all over your place. Is anyone picking them?
There's a handful that I can see developing in the trees. The main goes the same way, very, very low turnout. Last year was a bumper for both this year.
What do you think it is, a tribute to the weather?
I think it's cycles. Grapefruit go on cycles, they have a strong year, then followed by a weak year.
Let me know if you have any leeches from me, okay?
You always go to the exotic fruit market.
I go to the dye fruit market. The dye fruit market's more affordable.
Sixty-foot ladder, you can get all you want.
Oh, yeah. I need a buck, I need a cherry picker for that.
By the way, just to mention, we have so many talented musicians and singers that attained All-State Status, that's why we have to bring them in during two different meetings. We brought in mostly elementary last meeting, and then middle school and high school this meeting.
Mr. Barber, you did such a wonderful job with the student celebration. Can you handle the recognitions here with the Assistant Principal of the Year and the, no, whatever, or excuse me, the F1 School National Championship Team? Wow, look at them all.
You stole my thunder.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No, we're moving now from the statewide recognition to the national recognition. In February, a team of students from Manatee County traveled to Austin, Texas for three days of competition at the Circuit of the Americas, which, as I understand it, is, that's the, really, the lone F1 Formula One racetrack in the United States. And after three days of competition, the team from Manatee County, known as Pinnacle, won the F1 in Schools United States National Championship. This win earns them the right to compete in the F1 School, in Schools World Finals later this year, and where will, where will that be?
Abu Dhabi in the UAE.
What she said. So Abu Dhabi.
One of our favorite places.
So, but to tell us more about this fantastic team, and we have a history of success on the world stage in this competition, I have Palmetto High Career and Technical Education Teacher Brian Kenzior, and Able Elementary Graduation Enhancement Technician Margie Nannie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman Minor, Superintendent Saunders, members of the Board, it is a pleasure to present the USA Championship Formula One in Schools Team Pinnacle to you this evening. I am proud to co-coach the team with Palmetto High's Brian Kenzior. As a School Board, you all have the unique advantage of being able to say your school district has more podium finishes at the F1 in School Nationals and Worlds than any other school district in the United States. That's really saying something when you know that it's the largest STEM competition in the world. F1 in Schools is like combining 20 or more Technology Student Association events into one big multi-disciplinary event on steroids. It's not for the faint of heart. At the world level, we compete against more than 50 other teams from 40-plus nations. I started coaching F1 in Schools in 2006, and handed the coaching baton off to Brian in 2013. He has done a wonderful job of carrying on our great tradition with a strong third-place finish with perspective at Worlds in Singapore last September. He invited me to come out of the mothballs this season, to join him in preparing our new Team Pinnacle to win the USA Championship, which they did in grand style in February. Our motto is "One Goal," which is to bring back the crown to the USA like we did with Uninus in 2010. None of this would be possible without the support of this school district, who has invested so much in STEM education. We are grateful to our administration, especially Doug Wagner and the ACT Department, Mary Glass of the Manatee Education Foundation, and all of our community partners we will formally thank tonight. The alumni members of this district's F1 in School Teams have used their experience to assist them in getting into MIT, Georgia Tech, Yale, Duke, and other top universities. After graduation, they have become engineers, teachers, and rocket builders. I feel certain the F1 in Schools experience is preparing these students to learn, dream, achieve, and lead our country forward in a very positive direction. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce you, our Team Manager for Pinnacle, Jay Kenzior. Pinnacle is your National Championship Team. Thank you very much.
I would just like to start by thanking you for allowing us to speak with you today. I'll start by introducing my team. First, Abigail Owen, our Marketing Manager. She's responsible for managing our outlets to the community. Eleanor Hopkins, our Graphic Designer. She creates the different elements of our brands, as well as creating a, as well as creating two 10-page portfolios, which we turn in at competition. Ariana Longo, our Resource Manager. She's responsible for reaching out to businesses and establishing partnerships and raising funds. Jackson Bounis, our Design Engineer. He's responsible for the design and performance of our car. In part with Jackson, Hunter Rayly manufactures the components of our car using a 3D printer and a CNC mill. Our support members, Elizabeth Casadante and Sammy Slovak, aid our team in completing tasks while establishing a basis of knowledge to become our competing team next year. We would like to thank AT&amp;T, Manatee Memorial, Mosaic, Spectrum, PCI Communication, Allison Engineering, R-Cubed Engineering, OnTrack Publishing, Dill Machining, 8357, iCenter, RNS Engineering, VBH, Kiwanis Club, and especially the Manatee Education Foundation for their continual support and partnership. And I'll pass it off to our advisor, Brian Kenzior.
Thank you very much. It's great to be up with this talented group of kids, and Margie and I actually have the easiest job out of anybody because they really make us look good. That's kind of what happens with them. But, no, we had a really great National Championship, and along with those awards that we won, there was five or six others that we were nominated for, and it was, I won't say a walk in the park, but we did really, really well with what we were. We were very prepared, and it showed when we got there. Again, we just want to thank all of our sponsors and the school district. You guys have been an amazing support for us. I know there's times when we travel off to these places and you go, "Where are you going again?" But at the end of the day, the kids benefit so much from this, and they are really, truly achieving great things once they get out of the classroom here, and they're well-prepared. One of the things with this competition is, yes, it's about the little car that you just seen, it's about all the portfolios, but it's also a business. They have to basically brand and market and build, develop an entire company, raise the money necessary to do all those things, and they're doing an amazing job at it. So I can't thank you enough. So, one of the things that we're in the process of doing is, obviously, we have to go to Abu Dhabi, so we're looking for sponsorships and partnerships with the community. So, anybody in the community watching tonight, please contact us or anybody through the district, and I'm sure they can get you in touch with myself or Margie. And I'd love to have these kids come out and show you what they do on a one-on-one basis because, give them about a half an hour, and you'll truly be wowed by what they do. So, but thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is it photo time?
Sure is.
Be sure to tell us when the competition is.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Stephen.
The competition is actually going to be right at, we'll, let me think about it for a second. We'll actually be competing the week of Thanksgiving, so in one way, it's good because we're not going to miss school as much, but it will be over late November.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I want to emphasize that a lot of the accomplishments that you're seeing tonight are due to the hard work that you all provide, as well as district staff and teachers and support. So, this next recognition, we're moving on now to employees, and we have a very special recognition that all of us are very proud of, and I'm not going to ask this person to come forward yet because, as, by way of introduction, we're debuting a brand-new hashtag WeManatee video, so let's start with that.
The 2019 Assistant Principal of the Year is Bernadette Pletcher. Bernadette has been an Assistant Principal at James Tillman Elementary in Manatee County since 2014, and she helped that school improve its school grade from an F to a B.
The life cycle of every sea turtle starts on a beach. I love the fact that even though I'm an administrator, I get back into the classroom, and I love teaching kids, and I love doing math, so I've been teaching fourth and fifth grade math, so I feel like I'm really part of the journey. I feel like I'm not just sitting in my office, you know, and giving out direction. It's really being a part of it and getting involved. There's only one place that she will lay her eggs. It's why I get up in the morning, and I just love doing it, so it's fun. It's never boring, that's for sure.
If you've watched any of our State Board of Ed meetings, you know how much emphasis we put on leadership on the ground, so we are grateful to have leaders like you, and it's our pleasure to have the opportunity to honor you here today.
I want those Title I students to have the intellectual ability to compete with students that are from non-title schools. They have, they have that ability. We believe in all of those kids.
What I've noticed at Tillman is it's a centrally-located neighborhood school. It's been here a long time. We've got parents, we've got grandparents, we've got, you know, grandchildren, they've all been at Tillman. Every two to three years, the female sea turtle swims back to this special beach. They want to volunteer time, you do that. If they feel strongly about something, give them the voice and let them come in and talk to you. As we say that every day, that it takes a village, it is not just us. Fifty-four, and then jump another 10. Sometimes you have to be very careful what you pray for because sometimes you get it. I prayed for something like this, and I got it, and wow, it's been an adventure. I'm Bernadette Pletcher, and I am the School District of Manatee County.
Join us at WeManatee.net.
I want to say a special thanks to Matt Messenger, Michael Trimboli, and Melissa Parker for making that video possible. And now, I'd like to introduce the state of Florida's Assistant Principal of the Year, Bernadette Pletcher of Tillman Elementary School.
I would love to introduce my principal. This is Marla Massey Blackmore, and when I said, "Sometimes you have to watch what you pray for, because you get it," this is what I prayed for, and I got it, and I'm very, very blessed, and I'm very grateful for her. It wouldn't be possible without the work that she does and all of the guidance she's given me, so I'm very grateful for what Marla does.
And I just want to say that I'm grateful for the three years I've had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Pletcher, and as she leaves Bayshore Elementary next year, you will be very proud, very grateful to her.
You need one more award, and this one's more favorable than the last one, right? Because it comes from Manatee County.
It does.
So we're very proud of you, and thank you for all the work that you've done, and we'll continue to do it.
Thank you.
By the way, Ms. Saunders, you were up there that night.
She was. She was with me. It was so nice. It was such a privilege that I believe.
Would you like to stand out here for the photo?
Yes, please.
Can we get a photo with the School Board?
Sure.
One between two boxes. Or it should be the other way around.
They didn't tell you this part.
No, they didn't.
Parents, parents? All right, one last recognition, and again, this is a very special one, and it just goes to sort of the kind of place that Manatee County has in this state. And this next award was given out by the Florida Department of Transportation, and each year, they recognize three crossing guards across the state. And to explain a little bit more about what this award is all about and who it's going to, again, we have a WeManatee video to show you, so we could run that.
All righty, have a great day now. I consider crossing guards unsung heralds. I mean, we have over 15,000 crossing guards in the state of Florida, and probably the average age of most of us are close to 70. I got hired by the School Board, and I worked for them for 33 years and one month. I started up the Peskental Program for this district. Y'all have a great day. I retired in 2013, September 28th, and I had a lot of projects I wanted to do. I wanted to do some traveling, but after a while, I got bored, and I just happened to be going down 59th Street, close to where I live, and I saw a crossing guard, so I stopped and talked to him. I've been a crossing guard for three years, and if it wasn't my job, I'd still do it. I really would. I enjoyed this. The award for going the extra mile, only one crossing guard wins, and that was me, which shocked me. Good morning! Have a good day! I wave to people, and then when I see windows open, I yell to them, "Good morning." I've had so many people, not parents, just people going through the zone, stopping to say thank you to me, because I've made their day. They woke up grumpy, and here I am, giving them a wave and a smile. Pay attention. Don't be on your telephones. Have your eyes looking forward. Don't be looking down. Don't be putting makeup on. Don't be texting people. Don't be petting your dog. That's everything I've said and I've seen. But I look at these children as mine, because they're my responsibility, and I just love doing it. I'm not here for awards. I'm not here for recognition. I'm here to protect the children. I am Dwayne Rydel, and I am the School District of Manatee County.
Join us at WeManatee.
So it's a pleasure to introduce you to the 2018 Florida School Crossing Guard of the Year Extra Mile Award winner from, Stewart Elementary, Mr. Dwayne Rydel. I'm not a person who gives speeches, so I'm just going to say, "Let's take the pictures."
One more, one more award. One more recognition.
I just want to thank you for keeping our students safe and going the extra mile in Manatee County. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it.
See you in the morning.
Don't wake up grumpy.
By the way, we almost had to kidnap him to get him down here, but he came.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barber. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda, to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the April 23, 2019 Agenda, updated April 22, 2019, and posted to the website. Is there a motion to approve the Agenda Amendments?
Some is.
It's been moved and seconded. Hearing no discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
For a motion to amend the agenda, as we heard earlier today from the Internal Auditor and Audit Committee, the Superintendent has been working on an agreement to bring a censure in to assist with the internal accounts issues and to identify the needs of the district to prepare for year-end. Timing is of the essence, and we don't meet as a board for business for a couple of weeks. I would like a motion on new business to authorize the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with a censure not to exceed $100,000.
Are you voting no against approval of the agenda?
No, no, I'm amending the agenda before we approve the agenda, and it has been moved and seconded. You can call for discussion.
Okay. Is there discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I seconded, so I totally support this. I'm just curious.
Okay, the chair recognizes Mr. Kennedy.
I'm just curious to ask the Superintendent, has something come up today, or it's, we want to get something in place in the... We want to get something in place in the next two weeks.
As I had mentioned, I had been speaking to them, and I just received an email, so I have not seen it. What I had asked for is we needed some ability to make reports, a report writer, possibly to contract, send somebody down to do a couple of those because we don't have some of the reports needed. And the internal billing function of the system had never been developed. So, we need someone to put that into place so we can collect some internal billing. So, I haven't read...
I'm out of order.
I haven't read it.
I'm out of order. Because we should only be discussing amending the agenda. I should ask this question when we get to it on new business. I just caught myself.
That's okay.
But I just got an email, so I've not read the contract. So, that's it.
I want to make sure I understand where we are here. The chair asked for a motion to amend the agenda. Mr. Hope stated in unreadiness because there's an additional amendment that has not been published that he wants to put on the agenda. Is that right?
It's close, but you're a little bit off. I'll let the chair address it.
I'm going to ask for Board Counsel. We have a motion that has been made and seconded. I didn't hear, but maybe it was said, to amend the motion to approve the agenda. Is that it?
It was a motion to add an item to the agenda under new business.
Okay, that's a motion to amend. Okay. And to add a specific item under new business. Is that correct? Okay. And you've made that motion to amend the primary motion that was made, I think, by Mr. Kennedy.
By Ms. Messenger.
By Vice Chair Messenger. And it was seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Okay? And is there discussion about this amendment or motion to amend the agenda? I guess that's where we are right now. And I guess the question, is it really necessary? And why is it necessary to amend the agenda right now? Is this recommended by the superintendent?
I believe the reason that, like I said, the email just came in, and I think because of the delay between this board meeting and the next one, we could possibly get services in quicker. Again, I've not read the contract yet, but I could certainly email it out to the board members to make you aware of it. But I've just received an email on it.
Okay. So, is that to say you don't have an opinion at this point?
Well, I'm hoping that they're providing the services that we asked for and that I could enter a contract with them to get started on this quickly, once the board authorized it, is I believe the ask.
Right, Chair.
If I could weigh in for a moment, just to see if I can clarify. As I understand, the motion to amend the agenda, it's to give the superintendent approval or authority to enter to a contract. It doesn't require her to enter to a contract. It just gives her the ability to do so prior to your next board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. I think that Mr. Hope is stating or indicating it, but Board Attorney Di, you know, has interpreted to give her authority, but not necessarily approve any agenda. Okay.
No, Chair.
Yes.
If the amendment that Dr. Hope has proposed passes and it goes on to the agenda, and then the agenda passes...
Okay, the agenda...
Then the superintendent will have the authority to approve the contract if she sees fit to do so.
Okay.
Once we take it up in new business.
Yeah.
So, that's two motions.
No, it's one motion.
Okay. All right.
Let me help out here, okay? All I'm doing...
No, I think we have it.
Okay, good.
Okay, the motion is to amend the agenda, is not to necessarily approve the item that Board Member Hope would like to add to the agenda. Okay? And is there any further discussion about amending the agenda? The chair, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of amending the agenda as previously amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think it's unanimously approved. So, the agenda is now amended to, under new business, add a provision concerning, but not necessarily approving, the superintendent having authority to consider an entering into a contract on behalf of the board in this school district with Accenture. Okay? I think that's... Yes, sir.
We actually, we voted to amend the agenda. We now have to vote to approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda.
Okay, well, I understand. Okay? Okay. Now, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay. Opposed? The agenda as amended is approved. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes. I think public comments first.
I'm sorry, what?
Public comments.
Okay, we'll have the public comments. I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Messenger.
Okay. I'm going to read the rules for everyone. It's our policy. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not an open forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also ask that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Mr. Gibellina. I did not see him, but...
He was here, but I think you...
Is he out there? Mr. Gibellina, come on down. He's coming. After Mr. Gibellina will be Michelle Crockett.
Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is Glenn Gibellina, for record, Manatee taxpayer. So, I'm going to talk about the future agenda items that I'm a little concerned about. One of my questions is, is it true that students can miss 100 days or more and still be able to graduate? Is there no truancy in effect? So, that's one of my concerns because I believe we're having students that miss in excess of 100 days still gooding up and getting their diploma. I don't know how they can get an education if they're missing those many days, but if that's the policy, that's what it is. If it isn't, then I would like to know that as well. My second concern is, of course, teacher housing. You know, what are we doing with it? I've brought this up before. We've got facilities that are being unused, such as Wakeland. We've got portables out there that we convert to very nice townhouses, very inexpensively. And I would like to see something go in that direction. My third concern is the energy that our schools use. Now, we had a company back last year, Amoresco, offered to come in, and I wrote each and every one of you an email on this, offered to come in and do an energy audit to a number of our schools. And why we have not moved forward with this is beyond me. I believe the ball's in your court, Mr. Minor, but we need to do that. It's a free energy audit. They currently audit over 400 schools, so they know what they're doing. Let's handpick a couple of schools and take a look at it and get an energy audit done. I have no love for FPNL. I think you all know that. One of the other concerns is that we have Arcadia Power. So, here's a company that provides clean energy, fuel, solar, and wind energy, that this school board should consider paying, going through Arcadia instead of still paying Florida Power and Light, who uses fossil fuels. I don't know about you, but I want my tax dollars to go to clean energy. So, I think you need to look into that as well. The other thing I don't understand is that awful lot of money is going back to this board. I've pooled each and every one of your real estate taxes, and 63%... We have three taxes on here. Your paying over 63% of your taxes come back to the school board. So, I would like to have some accountability on all the money that's coming back here. So, I would appreciate looking into that. And I think you need to assign a task force for all the property the school board owns. And you own hundreds of pieces of property. School teachers need a place to live. Bus drivers need a place to live. There's no affordable housing. I've been talking about this at several forums. You all know I have been. Let's move in the right direction and do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Crockett. And after Michelle will be Norm Nelson.
Good evening.
Evening.
Board members. My name is Michelle Crockett, and I'm the granddaughter of Louise Rogers Johnson. I'm here out of my concern for the situation that we find ourselves in regarding the naming of the school. I'd like board members, as well as the superintendent, to please give thoughtful consideration to the naming process in maintaining the name of my grandmother in the school's name. I could not begin to go through my grandmother's influence in this community. Born and raised here, an infant, the first infant born in the Cortez Plaza area. I can remember her times shared here, spent here as a board member. And they're very fond memories, but in saying that my grandmother's greatest accomplishment in my mind, even though she gave 42 years of education, was her influence in the community. She loved her community. If you drew a two-mile radius from Johnson Middle School, within that circumference, you would find my grandmother's greatest influence. A part of that was realizing community faith in action, which was her brainchild birthed out of the United Methodist Church that she attended, Rogers United Methodist Church. And she sought out volunteers who would come down from the north to support education and making sure that children had opportunities to be tutored free of charge through that program. Just want to make sure that we can continue as a community and as a family to sense her influence and that that is not diminished in any way. So, we're praying that you will support our desire to make sure that my grandmother's name is memorialized in this effort that's coming forth in the naming.
Thank you.
I have family members here represented with me tonight. Will you just kind of wave your hands? Yeah. Yes. Thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, come on down. And after Mr. Nelson will be Sophie Bell.
No handout. Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, and superintendent, I'm going to give you my personal view of what the public or I think. It left you listening to the audit report and the Finance Committee Chairman of all the problems you have. Kind of reminded me of one of your statements, is the buck stops here, and looking at all these problems confront you and how to solve them. Now, I've been here for, starting my seventh year, I don't think I've missed more than a couple of meetings. I go to your workshops. I go to your committee meetings. And one thing, and I go to your training that you've had. The only guy left is Mr. Minor, since I started seven years ago. But various people have gone through all those sessions. I've done a lot of reading. This is started it, what boards could do. And one thing in this, and in all your training, and in many of the books that I've read, it says you ought to be a team. You ought to be a team and act like it. You take a basketball place, there's five people out there. Without some coordination, direction, they don't act as a team. They didn't coach. Now, you've struggled, this board and many other previous members, struggled on being a team. So, I'll give you one more recommendation from the public who pays your salary and pays your taxes, is maybe you can't do it by yourselves. Maybe you ought to get a coach and say, "Hey, this is what team members do, and we'll become a team." You'll never become the best school district in the state unless you change your way. That was my recommendation. You've got enough this morning. This is afternoon.
Thank you. Sophie Bell. And after Sophie, come on down, is Ray Williams.
I'm there doing my classwork and talking to my friends when the announcements come on. This is a drill. I repeat, this is a drill. We are having an active shooter drill. We go into the small closet meant for books, not 25 students. I think to myself, "It's okay. It's just a drill." But a drill for what? A drill for being shot in school? I go to school to learn. I'm practicing how to get shot, how to die. I'm practicing how to protect myself against a machine gun. I'm not scared of anything. I'm a Gryffindor. I'm brave and outgoing. But that's when I got home to my mom giving me a hug like she was never going to see me again. I was so confused until she told me about the Parkland school shooting. I was stunned. I've heard about guns and shootings, and even school shootings in the past, but this happened at the same time I was complaining to my friend that I didn't have a boyfriend on Valentine's Day. Kids were getting shot in school. This was the day, the fear that nobody ever thinks they would have, the fear that I got, the fear of guns, the fear of being shot in school. No one, including me, should have that fear. Please, don't make me more scared of guns. I don't want my teachers having a gun. Guns should not be in school, period. Guns make schools more dangerous, and in a high-intensity moment, the teacher may pull the trigger on the wrong person. That teacher goes to jail for murder, but it wouldn't be their fault. It would be the gun in their hands, the gun that shouldn't be in school. Teachers can protect students. They don't need a gun to do that. On the other hand, it only takes a teacher to go crazy or a kid to get the gun from them. I don't want to go to school every day knowing that my teacher has a gun on them. Teachers were trained to teach, not to use a gun. So, please let my teachers teach and let me be a fun, crazy, silly, stupid kid who can have fun at school, not be worried about guns. Thank you.
Ray Williams. And after Ray, Barbara Forrest.
Good evening, Chairman Minor, School Board, Superintendent. I'm here just on a formality tonight, I guess, as far as the naming of a portion of an existing facility on behalf of the Gillett family, about naming the auditorium at the new Parrish Charter High School under the name of William A. Bud Gillett Jr. And I believe that's all I was needed to do tonight, this formality, and then it'll be passed on to the agenda later. Is that correct?
I don't believe we have that on our agenda for tonight.
They've told me that I had to be here tonight. Lynda?
Now, I believe he's wanting to name, the first thing is making the board aware, and then we bring it up to vote after that. So, he's asking to name after Parrish Community High School, but not the Charter School.
Not the Charter School. Yeah.
Parrish Community.
The auditorium, naming it under William A. Gillett, Bud Gillett Jr. I was told by Lynda and them the day that we had to come here with the formality, and then it was passed on.
The next board meeting, it'll be on an agenda for consideration to vote.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't want you to have the impression we were going to vote on that.
No, no. No impression whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Barbara Forrest. And Mary Conway.
Thank you for holding this hearing tonight. I am here to ask you to please consider voting to name the athletic stadium at Parrish Community High School, the Walter E. Miller Athletic Stadium. I know I saw many of you at Walter's recent funeral. And I've always thought of myself as being good to my community and supporting things and volunteering and being on committees. But I was so ashamed of myself, just listening to Walter's eulogy and all the things that he has donated his time to every child, every people in need. And he loved all people of Manatee County. And he loved all people of Manatee County, and he was dedicated to it for his entire life. He was such a representative for us in everything that he did. And I couldn't think of a kinder, more humble soul than Walter Miller. And I certainly hope you'll consider voting yes for Walter Miller to remember him in the school district in that manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Barbara, I'm sorry, Mary Conway.
Thank you, Chairman, Superintendent, and board members for allowing me to speak. My name is Mary Conway, and I have been an educator in this county for over 25 years. I'm also a small business owner in Manatee County. And I am here to plead with you to please vote against arming teachers. I would like to know, and these are just questions I'd like you to think about, when that gun goes off and the teacher has accidentally or intentionally shot a student to try to protect another one, who is going to hire the attorney to defend her? Because there will be lawsuits. If the gun is broken into, if it's locked in a cabinet, and I'm here to tell you that those drawers and those cabinets in those classrooms are flimsy on locks, it would be very easy for a student to break into it and take that gun and attack another student or possibly the teacher. It is not fair to ask teachers to make those decisions. Nor is it fair to expect a teacher, she steps, he or she steps outside the classroom and sees someone in sweats running down the hallway with a gun and thinks that's the intruder and shoots them, only to find out that it is the recently hired gym teacher that he or she had not yet met. Please, do not do this to our teachers. They are expected to do enough already, such as herd students into closets and bathrooms to try and protect them with these drills in case something like that does happen. And who is going to pay for the counseling for that teacher? Because that teacher will be affected, and it will traumatize them, and they will need help. No person, especially a teacher, should ever have to make a decision like that. You have a shortage in Manatee County and all around Florida. You will have more of a shortage, I am sure, if you start expecting teachers to carry guns. And whether they have the choice or not, they are still going to be in a school with other teachers that they may not feel really should be carrying a gun. And they fear for their students and themselves. Please, vote against this. This is not the answer. Teachers should teach. Let the police carry the guns. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay.
I have signed up online for public comments.
Okay, hold on. I have a list of people that have signed up to speak specifically on old business, which is the arming, the resolution.
I've signed up to speak on.
Okay, when that item comes up, I will call your names.
Is that not a public comment?
That is also public comment. There's, our agenda is set up as public comment in the beginning, which can speak on any topic. And then if you signed up to speak on a specific topic, then when that topic comes up, then I will call your name.
And when that topic come up?
Would you prefer to speak now during public comments?
I would, yes, I've got grading to do.
Okay, that's fine, I don't mind. Which, what is your name?
Greg Kline.
Okay, great. You were the first one on old business anyway, so come on up.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Greg Kline. Occasionally referred to by a former superintendent as just an art teacher at Lakewood Ranch High School. I'm sure that everyone in attendance this evening appreciated the relatively new, highly secure entrance to the school board building. Big difference from a couple of years ago, and I'm sure it cost a lot of money and a lot of effort went into it. That's really the way to go. One secure entrance, everybody goes through the same entrance, pretty sure that weapons will not even ever get into the building. And I guess that's why we aren't discussing arming school board employees. You don't need to arm the staff if you have a secure environment. And that is the point I'm trying to make. Arming teachers, in my view, is an admission that we have already failed. If we are preparing for a campus shooting, we have already failed our students by allowing the possibility of someone intent on doing harm entering our school campuses with guns. I was curious how many school board shootings there were, and I could only find one in 2010 in Panama City, Florida. Guy took a couple of shots at the school board, then put a bullet in his own head. Nobody else was hurt. Since that time, there have been 292 school shootings and 199 fatalities. Bearing that in mind, this is a picture of the security at Lakewood Ranch High School. This is a six-foot chain link fence. This is the security at most of the schools in the counties. A six-foot chain link fence. Of course, the front of the campus at Lakewood Ranch is much more secure. They have locked gates, security cameras, et cetera, but only a fool would attack the campus from the front when the back of the campus is such a sieve. You know, they say that 9/11 was a failure of imagination. No one in our security or intelligence agencies could imagine the horror of such an attack. So we as a country did nothing to defend against it. We couldn't even imagine that could happen. This is another picture of the back of the Lakewood Ranch High School campus. These are all portable classrooms. Now imagine somebody with a semi-automatic weapon hopping over that six-foot fence, running down this row of portables, shooting indiscriminately through the walls of these classrooms jam-packed with students. It would be like shooting through a paper plate. In just a matter of a minute or two, there could be hundreds of casualties. And armed teachers, even our SRO and guardian, who we are happy to have on campus, couldn't do anything to stop it. What this district needs is not a bunch more guns on campus, but to harden our campuses against the potential of someone entering our schools with guns.
Thank you, Mr. Kline.
Please indulge me.
No.
This means high defenses and cameras.
Sorry.
Limited secure entrances that are manned by security professionals. Please indulge me, sir. I have about 30 more seconds.
I'm sorry. You can send it to us by email.
I took an informal poll of my students arming teachers. And the overwhelming concern that there was a student who was...
You're asked to leave, sir. No, you're going, you're leaving.
We have a problem with guns in this country, and I've never heard of effectively solving the country a problem by more than...
Is there anyone else that's signed up that would like to speak now?
I also don't believe that our school board should be more secure than a church.
Will you tell me your name so I can? I'm sorry, there's a, hold on a second. Yes.
Trent Miller.
Trent Miller, okay. If you'd like to come speak up now, you can.
Keep an eye on my time as well.
Sorry, we just...
Oh, I understand.
The rule, and we're trying to be rule followers here.
First of all, I would thank the board for your service.
Before you start, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Would it be helpful if 20 seconds before the three minutes are up, if somehow we could notify these people?
They have time right here above their heads.
All we have to do is look up.
They can see it.
I just, I don't understand why we have to be rude to each other and why we have to be disrespectful. This is too important to be rude about. And if we have a rule and you don't respect us, then what is the purpose? All right, I'm sorry. Apparently, he didn't know that that was up there, because I didn't know that was up there.
All right.
But now that we all know that it's up there, I can expect that we will act like the adults that our children who are sitting home watching us expect us to be.
Mr. Miller, come on down. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank the board members for your service to our community. I don't have, I know there's a lot of emotion around the subject of arming our teachers. I don't have an emotional argument, but I do rise in opposition to the prospect of arming our teachers. And I rise with the qualifier that my wife and I are attorneys. We've practiced in Manatee County for 17 years. I've raised my children in Manatee County. Grace, hope, faith, and chance. My wife Lisa, we're all here today to voice our opposition to arming our teachers, and not because we don't trust our teachers, we do trust them. I trust, I've trusted the teachers of Manatee County with the education of my children and will continue to do so. I think that, I think that Manatee County should, then this school board should seriously consider the liability associated with arming teachers. And that liability has the potential not only to accrue to the taxpayers of this county when something inevitably goes wrong. Now, I think putting guns, locked, loaded guns in the hands of less than ideally suited people, a wide swath of people who became educators, they didn't become defenders, puts them in a constantly perilous situation where there's a sliding scale from liability, where a threatened teacher dealing with a 16-year-old who's grown to be six foot six and is, like me, I've personally been accused in my lifetime of being an assertive person and intimidating. God forbid someone were so intimidated by me in the context of a classroom when I was 16 years old that they reached into their desk and took out a weapon. And, and just to demonstrate, you know, I'm an appreciator of handguns. I own four handguns myself. I have been licensed to carry concealed since 1999. I appreciate guns. I will educate my children regarding their use. But I don't think that putting guns in the hands of our teachers will do anything other than inevitably create situations where teachers feel like they have to resort to their use. And that sliding scale includes committing a felony by taking that gun out and placing it on the counter in order to get order or to intimidate someone who they feel is intimidating them, up to the tragedy that we can all envision where that gun is misused in the attempted defense of the students or in the attempted defense in a stand-your-ground situation of the teacher. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, and I hope you will listen to what the community is having to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you said Maria Hussey. Okay. I know I saw your name. Yep, come on down.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Manatee County School Board and the Manatee County School District, my name is Maria Hussey, and I am delightfully a teacher at Palmetto High School. It is my privilege to represent hundreds of people grateful for the honor bestowed on Walter Miller. Your actions speak loudly about a man as a person, a professional, and an active supporter of equality education for each and every student in Manatee County for so many years. He was a model citizen. He practiced what he preached. A model citizen, which we strive to instill in our students to become in the future. We tell our students, go forth, make this planet a better place. Walter Miller did just that for his, for this great county, the majority of his life. Personally, my children, having received their K through 12 education right here in this school district, have achieved more than I ever dreamed. My son is a computer engineer for the United States Air Force. My daughter is a trial attorney at the highest level of the United States Department of Justice. For Walter Miller, thank you for this honor. Tonight, many hearts will beam at this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anyone else that signed up for a different item that would like to speak now? Yep, come on down.
Good evening. I'm here as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action and a mother of two students in the Manatee County School District and a former Manatee County substitute teacher. I had the pleasure of working with dedicated professionals every day who go above and beyond for their students. Teachers wear many hats each year, and more and more responsibilities are being placed on them. Being an armed guard should not be one of them. An armed presence in our schools should be a law enforcement officer or a licensed security guard with prior law enforcement experience. At the Pulse nightclub shooting, 13 law enforcement officers fired a total of 172 bullets. Only seven of those struck the shooter. In a violent and chaotic active shooter situation, how can we expect a teacher to respond any better than those trained professionals? Arming teachers ignores the research that the very presence of a gun increases the risk posed to children. Just as with their parents' firearms, students may be aware of where and how their teachers store their firearms. That question alone regarding the safe storage of the teacher's firearms raises numerous concerns. The American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association oppose allowing guns in the hands of teachers. The National Association of School Resource Officers strongly opposes the proposal to arm teachers. The FBI found that in 160 active shooter incidents, there was only one successful armed citizen intervention by a highly-trained Marine. In contrast, unarmed civilians successfully intervened in over 20 incidents. In Pinellas County, the sheriff stated that if at least one of the teachers at Marjory Stoneman Douglas on that day would have been armed, they could have stopped the shooter. However, we now know that there was a systemic cascade of failures that day in Parkland, one of which was a failure to address the issues with the shooter prior to the massacre. Like many mass shooters, the 19-year-old suspected of shooting and killing at least 17 people and injuring 17 others at a high school in Parkland displayed warning signs before the shooting. A study by the National Institute of Justice branch of the U.S. Department of Justice found 91% of recent school shooters were students or former students. The majority showed signs of crisis before the shooting. These prior threats of violence should be a sign and a plea for help. Threats of violence should be an occasion for parents to secure their firearms. The best way to protect American children in schools from shootings such as the incidents in Parkland is to pass comprehensive gun safety laws.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak now or want to wait until the agenda item? Okay, come on down. Knock them all out now.
Seven years ago, I sat in the library as my elementary school librarian told us the story of the Sandy Hook shooting. We had finished our reading time early, and she was reading the news on her phone when she looked up in shock and muttered something to herself. Now I picture it as an internal fight, deciding whether or not she should tell us, but in the end, she did. She told us the story of a librarian who locked her students in a textbook closet but couldn't fit in herself, and as she checked the lock to make sure her students were okay, she was shot. Quietly, she told us that she was willing to do the same. I will never forget that day, although at the time, I never thought it would matter. What kind of person would break into a school to hurt or kill children? Today, I attend school as an eighth grader at R. Dan Nolan Middle School, and these thoughts enter my head on a daily basis. One day, as I sat outside the school waiting for the administration to let us enter the doors, I watched seven cops pull up at a time. From my mother, I learned that there had been a threat against our school, raising security. She called me and offered me to come pick me up if I didn't feel safe. It was alarming to have my own mother concerned for my safety in such a way. I remember thinking to myself, if we need more security when there's a threat, then why don't we always have that type of security? However, the thought of arming teachers instead of trained officials is terrifying to me. The recent idea is that putting firearms in a few schools will go into effect. However, I think it is important to realize how quickly these things can spread. Firearms should not spread through schools like wildfire, nor should the fear that comes with the presence of these weapons. We are all human, and we all make mistakes. With a weapon in a classroom, one mistake puts every child and adult at risk. This morning at school, I asked 25 students on their opinion on bringing firearms into schools. Five of them wanted firearms in schools, while the other 20, 80% of them, said that they were not comfortable with having guns in schools unless equipped by a trained sheriff or police officer. I also asked my teachers today, and every one of them said that they did not feel comfortable having guns in our school or them carrying a gun. I was present at the meeting two weeks ago, and I heard over 10 public comments solely on this topic. Almost all of these people requested you make the decision not to arm our teachers. Almost all of these people requested you make the decision not to arm our teachers. Now, students and minors are asking for you to do this. You speak and decide on our behalf while we attend the schools that you make these decisions for. Please be our voice in this matter. I implore you to stop the violence by choosing not to arm teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other takers? One more hands. Everyone else is going to wait? It's not a long wait. Okay, I guess that concludes our public comment right now.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. I think we're now at approval of minutes, and does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning the minutes?
Yes, sir. I recommend the approval of the minutes from April ninth, twenty nineteen, school board workshop and regular meeting.
Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Board Member Kennedy, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there a discussion? The chair hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is concerning the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a recommendation from the superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for April twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Been moved by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there a discussion?
There's public comment.
Okay, there's public comment.
Uh, Mr. Gibilina, is he still here? Mr. Gibilina, is he out there? Um, and I have one other, um, a Harry, maybe Harry Taylor? No? Here's Mr. Gibilina. Okay, Mr. Gibilina, I was told that you signed up for multiple items on our consent agenda. The way our public comment works for consent agenda is you have three minutes for all the items on our consent agenda.
My name is Glenn Gibilina, thank you for this opportunity. So I want to talk about item six first. And that's the, the part with the radio. So I guess what I don't understand is that, taking a view from thirty thousand feet, again, we discussed this before, it's five pages of blah, 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 all federal regulations, but at the end of the day, I don't know how many radios we're buying, I don't know what kind of services we're doing, and you just rubber stamp a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar contract. All I'm trying to explain is, explain it to the taxpayers where they understand the contracts. And the second thing I don't get, maybe my math ain't that good, but, uh, scope of the work shall be performed with the following locations, onsite, offsite, not to exceed one year. And you filled in April twenty-fourth to June, that's fourteen months. So this whole contract is, is null and void, or, or you're exceeding what it's asking you to do. So I think that, just as a taxpayer, this is very confusing to me. All I'm saying is that, and you've been doing business with this company for five years. And then the second thing that bothers me is says, where do you pay it from? It varies. What do you mean it varies? You either pay it from the same fund you paid it from last year, or you let the citizen knows what funds you're coming from. So this open-end contract, we don't know what the scope of the work, the radios we're buying, or where the monies are going for, is, is, as far as I'm concerned, is unacceptable to this taxpayer, and I don't understand it. The other issue is the school, this number twenty-two on the school roof. You know, we're spending two-point-six million dollars for contractor services for a new Again, you know, we're buying the materials, there, there's not much of an explanation of, of the labor costs or anything else that are, that, that concerns me, but really concerns me, and I've asked the board for this before, that every time a new roof is put on, renewable energy panels, solar panels should be considered. And I keep getting the feedback that it's not cost-effective. I would like to talk to that personnel who's telling this board, it's not cost-effective, because FPNL is putting up three-hundred-million panels in the next five years. So this mindset of brainwashing the board that it's not cost-effective has got to stop. I want to talk to that person that says it's not cost-effective, and, uh, he's either lying to the board, or he's getting misinformation, he's not qualified to advise this board that solar renewable energy is not cost-efficient, because it is. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for Harry. Okay, well, that concludes public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there discussion? Board, Board Member Kennedy?
Quick comment, don't worry. I, since we've had public comment about it, I just want to remind everyone that one of the items on this consent agenda is to name the stadium at Parish Community High School for Walter Miller. So with the approval of this consent agenda, that will take place. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the chair will call the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It carries unanimously. One other item on this consent agenda is to appoint as deputy superintendent, not interim, but as deputy superintendent Doug Wagner, who's over here to the left. And, uh, I think we're very fortunate to have him as our deputy superintendent, and congratulations, Doug. So let's give him a big say. We, we've heard many tributes, you know, to Walter Miller, all of them, many of them, not even heard tonight, but even at the service, you know, where I briefly spoke, can really encompass, you know, everything that he's done, you know, for this community. And, uh, our hearts go out to Mary and, you know, to all who know him, and I knew him pretty well. It's, it's a great loss, and I think it's wonderful that we're going to have this naming of him out at Parish Community High School. So thank you very much. The next item of business on the agenda is to bring up, under old business, the, there was a motion to re, at the last meeting, there was a motion to remove consideration of a resolution regarding the arming of non-security personnel on school district property from, and is there a motion now to, uh, take from the table, remove from the table, that motion to table? So move. It's been moved by Board Member Golden, and it's seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a discussion? The, what?
This is just to remove it, though.
Oh, this is just to remove it, okay.
Okay. The chair hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of removing from the table consideration of the resolution regarding arming of non-security personnel on school district property, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate nay. The, the motion carries four to one. So, um, the next item of business is consideration of a resolution regarding the army of, arming of non-security personnel on school district property. Is there a motion to, for such a motion? Mr. Chair? The, the chair recognizes Board Member Golden. Now, before he speaks, I want to tell all those who are here, by listening at, uh, at home on TV or radio, that at the last board meeting, this board, I believe for over an hour, you know, discussed this very important matter, and we heard comments, you know, from, from many in the community. It, it told to the community what, how seriously all the board members felt about this issue. And I, I don't think it has to be repeated tonight. How we feel about it will be reflected in how we vote on any motion that's taken off the table. And, uh, the, the chair recognizes Board Member, you know, Golden, uh, in that regard. So Board Member Golden, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, published agenda contains two proposed resolutions, one that I authored and the other that was authored by the chair. One, yeah, one that I authored and one that was authored by the chair. The resolution that I'm preparing to read now is a synthesis of both of those resolutions. Whereas in two thousand and eighteen, the Florida Legislature enacted legislation permitting sheriffs to establish the Coach Aaron Bayles Guardian Program in their respective counties that would allow certain individuals to receive training, including firearms training, leading to the sheriff issuing a school guardian certificate. And whereas under the legislation, school boards had the discretion to decide whether to participate in the guardian program. And whereas pursuant to the two thousand and eighteen legislation, classroom teachers were specifically excluded from participation in the guardian program. And whereas this is an important issue to the community and school board staff, which the school board believes it should publicly address, and whereas should such legislation be approved thereby, allowing classroom teachers to participate in the guardian program, and should such legislation continue to provide the school board with the discretion to either participate or not participate in the guardian program, the school board wishes to express to its employees and to the community its intention not to permit classroom teachers to carry firearms while on a school campus. Now, therefore be it resolved by the school board of Manatee County, Florida, in public meeting assembled that we oppose any of the provisions of Senate Bill seventy-thirty and House Bill seventy-ninety-three that will change the category of persons allowed to be armed on a public school campus to include persons who exclusively perform classroom duties as classroom teachers as defined in Florida Statute one-zero-one-two-point-zero-one perenn two perenn a. Be it further resolved by the Manatee County School Board that should the legislature expand the category of persons allowed to be armed on a public school campus to include persons who exclusively perform classroom duties as classroom teachers as defined in Florida Statute ten-twelve-point-zero-one perenn two perenn a, then such legislation should also include a provision that allows local school boards to opt out of doing so without penalty to any school district so choosing. And finally, be it resolved that should the school board of Manatee County, Florida, be given the option to decide whether the Manatee County School Board will permit classroom teachers to carry firearms while on school property, it will choose not to allow classroom teachers to carry firearms while on school property. Adopted this twenty-third day of April two thousand and nineteen, signed by the chairman and attested by, uh, our superintendent as the secretary. That is the, uh, resolution that I propose.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Golden. The, the motions made by Board Member Golden, is there a second to Board Member Golden's motion?
I already did.
What?
I already did.
Oh, okay. It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Now, is there any discussion other than, that's, hasn't been already made on this, which we discussed at length, uh, last time? Board Member Messenger?
There's just public comment, so once the motion's been made now?
Okay.
Let me move ahead with that first.
Okay, public comment, sure.
Okay. I, I only have three people, Catherine Brightbill, Tracy Pratt, and Jessica Patterson. Any of those folks here?
Tracy's here.
I'm here, Tracy Pratt.
Come on down.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Chair, Superintendent, my name is Tracy Pratt, I'm the chair of the Manatee County Democratic Party, and I am here to encourage the school board to adopt a resolution to oppose the provisions of Senate Bill seventy-thirty and House Bill seventy-ninety-three that would change the category of persons allowed to be on a public school campus to include teachers. We further encourage and support this board in adopting a resolution that should the legislature go forward with this dangerous bill, that school boards have the, have the ability to maintain an opt-out option. This is a decision to be made locally by our own elected school board members, not by the state legislature who is overreaching into our local government. The Manatee County Democratic Party supports our public schools, we support our teachers, we support our teachers' union, and the students and their families who deserve a safe academic environment in which they can feel safe from the proliferation of weapons in their classrooms. Not only am I chair of the Manatee County Democratic Party, I am mother to two school-age And it is heartbreaking to me, heartbreaking to me, when I have to pick my child up to hear about the drills that he has to go through. And when I came out tonight and told them where I was going, he said, I just can't go, it's too upsetting to him. As I have sat here, my phone has buzzed and buzzed and buzzed with family members in this community who have said, Tracy, how's it going? They're not going to arm the teachers, are they? Please, my children are sitting here on pins and needles scared that they're going to arm the teachers. This is not going to make our community safe, it's not going to make our school safe, and it's not going to make our children feel safe. Twenty-one percent of officers, trained police, killed with a handgun, were shot with their own service weapon. Do we expect that teachers can do better? Trained law enforcement have only a twenty percent hit ratio in armed confrontation. Do we expect our teachers can do better? Police officers sometimes make grave mistakes determining when deadly force is justified. Do we expect teachers can do better in the close quarters of a classroom? We don't, and teachers do not want to carry weapons overwhelmingly. Parents don't want it, polling shows this. And I'm here to ask you, the school board today, to be courageous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Brightbill, last call. Jessica Patterson. Okay, that concludes public comment.
Jessica's here.
Oh, Jessica, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Hi.
Hi.
Just getting over some bronchitis, started some meds yesterday, feeling better today, and I was able to make it tonight, because I, I really did want to be here, I was able to be here at the last meeting. My name is Jessica Patterson, and I am a parent of three kids. Two of them are in the public school system here in Manatee. I keep hearing the excuse that no teacher has to be armed. That's not good enough. We, as parents, do not want our kids in any classroom or school with armed civilians. Teachers that I speak to do not want to work, aside from other coworkers who are carrying weapons. We have a right to go to a school to be in a safe environment without the threat of weapons and allow our teachers to teach and law enforcement officers or guardians with law enforcement background to protect us as it is their job. Parkland was a tragedy and everything that could go wrong did. So many adults failed those kids, from the SRO who sat outside listening to kids getting massacred, massacred, to the, to the other officers who did the same, to the adults who hid in a closet when he saw the shooter with his walkie-talkie and didn't call red. But arming our teachers is not the answer. Protect our schools with those whose job it is to protect. Stop being on the cheat with our children's lives. Scott Hopes, you threatened another board member outside of school, said, you said, you quoted and said, he's lucky my gun was in my car. I don't know, it sounds like a threat, and if you could make a threat like that, what do you think a teacher might do with, with children in their classroom? Do we really need to have teachers who are so underpaid, underappreciated, and stressed out in situations that, that they may pull out their gun in a situation that could escalate into no return? This is what can happen when anyone carries. What happens when a teacher is carrying and a large student overtakes a teacher or a school employee gets a hold of their gun? What happens when they leave it in the bathroom, we, where we've seen it time and time again in other states? other states? What about insurance? Who is going to insure this, and how much is it going to cost? Lastly, I know, I can see the writing on the wall that this will come down to cost. Once you arm teachers or other school employees, you will get rid of our school resource officers and current guardians, and our teachers will be the first line of defense. What do they do if they are armed by hiding in a closet protecting their kindergarten class? Do they stay and protect their kids, or do they go out and play Rambo in the next classroom where a teacher may not be armed? How about we look at hardening our schools with bulletproof glass in the lobbies and the windows of the doors? Instead of constant active shooter drills that try and make it look like we're doing something, but really nothing, except stressing our kids out and giving some PTSD, or putting bright yellow and black, what looks like crime scene tape, to stress our kids out daily where it's a constant reminder that this is where they need to hide from a bad guy. But in so many schools, I want to say, when our legislators have voted today in the Senate, I bet they all have A-plus ratings with their NRA. Please don't say, because we don't want guns in our classrooms, that we don't want to protect our kids. They are our kids. We want them protected with those who are supposed to serve and protect, not our teachers who are here to teach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Messenger. Okay, is there any further discussion? The Chair hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Oh.
Board Member Kennedy for discussion?
No, it's for you.
Okay.
No, I'll be brief. Mr. Chair, as you stated, we had a long conversation about this at our last meeting. I appreciate you, Mr. Chair, and Reverend Golden for drafting a resolution, which was much better than my attempt at at last meeting, but the spirit is the same. I've been, I said last year, I've been saying for months, this is not a good idea. Our public commenters last meeting and tonight have covered this very well. I have nothing new to say. I do want to say that, as Mrs. Patterson mentioned, that the Senate, Florida Senate, has advanced their bill just this afternoon. And there are, it's just, it's an unfortunate process what gun politics has done to this country, because there are really some good pieces to this bill that just came out of the Senate. There's a threat assessment tool so that schools can identify before there is an issue, a student who is demonstrating problematic behavior. That's a step in the right direction. The legislature has reacted to our post-Parkland reality, and there were attempted amendments to remove this gun provision, but it just stayed. But as soon as you take the gun issue out of this bill and out of this, or, excuse me, when you take the arming teachers issue out of this, it's a bill that has broad bipartisan support for the things that it's doing. So I guess I just wanted to lament that it's unfortunate that we're here to do this, that we even have to have this discussion, but this is what our state leaders, the discussion they have put it into. But I'm proud to say that I believe that your local elected officials here on this board are going to resoundly turn this down. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Resoundingly.
Vice Chair Messenger, did you wish to make some further comments?
Yeah, only because you said, I'm not going to bring up old stuff, but, well, I'm going to try not to, but I kind of have to, so forgive me on that. I really appreciated both of the resolutions that were presented to us. There was one that I could support, and there was one that I really felt very uncomfortable supporting, and it really comes down to the language that I talked about the last time, where I don't support arming our teachers, but I also don't want to send a message that I'm opposing this legislation that actually gives us the choice, because right now we have a choice. And so for me to have language that says that we oppose provisions in these bills, I can't get behind that language. I can get behind the language that was presented in Chair Miners, because I felt as if it was very clear that this was aimed directly at arming the teachers and not at the fact that we had the choice provided by this bill. And that I support. But when it comes down to then, I feel like taking a turn towards something that I don't support, because, like I said, this is our very rare opportunity that we actually have a choice, and this should be local control. This should be local control, and I don't want to support something that says, "I oppose that." And to me, the language that was added, to me, sounds as if that's what we're doing, and I don't want to do that part. Like I said, I don't support arming the teachers, and I'll support whatever this board goes forward with, but for me, I cannot support that motion as it was presented to us.
Okay, thank you. The Chair recognizes Board Member Golden for further comment.
Because I don't want anybody to be misunderstanding of what's not here. The whereas clauses of the motion that is on the floor states three different things. It states first what this board opposes, and this board only opposes changing the language that is in the current legislation. That's all this board is saying that they oppose, which is the same thing it's saying this board opposes, including teachers in the category of people who can carry weapons. Now, if you don't, if you don't want teachers in the classroom with weapons, then that's all that this opposes. The second paragraph with respect to what is being resolved says exactly what we say we want, and that is to have local control over the decision of whether to arm teachers. And we are specifically asking that that be a provision that's included in any legislation that the legislature, now the Senate, has already approved. I don't know whether they included that in there, but that's what we said that we want, that they should include that. And the third is simply to confirm that should they do both of those things, should they include teachers in the category of people who are armed, and should there be a provision in there that allows the local school boards to opt out, we are saying in this resolution, we will do so, because that's what this community has expressed. That's what it says. Now, I cannot be held responsible for how you understand it, but that's what the language says. And that's what the Chairman and myself have come up together to reply to the community. And I think Mr. Kennedy said it, you know, you're either going to support this or not. There are all kinds of reasons not to support it, but only one to do so.
Can I respond to that? I feel like that was aimed at me.
No, no, you don't have to feel that way, because you were the one that said.
Mr. Golden.
I am the one that said it. I have to respond.
Okay, sure. The Chair recognizes Board, Vice Chair Messenger, and then we'll have, Mr. Hopes, I think, has some comments to make. Okay.
I just want to respond. You talked about how the first section makes it clear that we oppose, but nowhere in the first section, which Mr. Minor wrote, does he use the word "oppose." Nor, nowhere in the first section does he actually name the legislation and say we're going to oppose it. That is my only point. I have no problem with what Mr. Minor wrote. I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm just saying I do not want to oppose legislation that gives us a choice. That is all I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Board Member Hopes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, you know, I'd like to let the public know that the current law, the current law allows classroom teachers to be armed if they meet a particular criteria, and this board has not done that. This board has not taken the action. If we wanted to today, without this new legislation passing, we could choose to run certain classroom teachers through the guardian program, and this board has not done that. I do not think this board will do that. This area has one of the highest populations of retired military in the country, and there are numerous people. Once we get the assessment done of what we need in the way of armed personnel in our schools to protect our students and staff, should, should someone like the Parkland shooter, murderer, get through all of the defenses, that we would keep staff and students safe? I believe that's going to be done without arming teachers, and I'm going to vote against this because the language is factually incorrect. The law today allows certain classroom teachers to participate voluntarily in the guardian program, and your board has not chosen to exercise that option, and I don't think we will, because I don't think we will need to. I'm going to vote against it because there are counties in this state that are asking for the authority to allow certain classroom teachers to help protect their students and staff. That's up to those counties. We're not in that situation. My vote against this motion is not a vote to arm teachers, and that is for a number of reasons. Many of them have been brought to light. There are a number of issues that would need to be addressed. Number one, we don't have a community like some of these rural counties. We're not going to have the same needs as some of those counties. We worked to pass a tax referendum so we can pay teachers more, so we can retain them. I'm smart enough to know that I'm not about to support arming a teacher when I've got three teachers who don't want that teacher to be armed. They'll leave the county. I get that. So don't misinterpret my vote against this motion. I think this motion was poorly written, it's factually incorrect, and we shouldn't be passing it, but it's not a vote to arm teachers. My position is and will remain that we will work with our law enforcement partners who do have expertise to determine what we need in the way of armed personnel in our schools to protect students and staff. This district, our own district, trains the law enforcement officers in this area. Manatee Technical College runs the Law Enforcement Academy. We know what we're doing, and you're, the five board members up here, we take these decisions seriously, and quite frankly, I'm offended at some of the comments that were made. Some are not true, but I'm offended that you even think that we would lightly take on a decision. I'm offended that you would think I would do it. But I.
Okay, ma'am, you're out of order. You'll be asked to leave. Okay, Officer, will you escort that lady out, please?
My vote.
No, you're going out, ma'am.
My vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, you have to leave.
And that's one reason why I'm not going to support it, because this board took a position that we only wanted armed law enforcement in our schools, and we discovered that wasn't even a possibility. It wasn't even a possibility. And so we opted to participate in a hybrid with well-trained guardians, most of them are former military, former police officers, they know how to handle a gun, they've been in combat. This board, I believe, will follow the process that we went through before, we will listen to the experts, and we will do everything that we can do to ensure that our staff and students are safe. We're not talking about arming teachers. We've never, we have never discussed on this board a motion to arm teachers, to enact a policy to arm teachers. We haven't done that. We have policies in place that school district employees, with the exception of the guardians, cannot carry a firearm on campus. They can't bring it in the parking lot of a school. I can't bring it into a parking lot on the school, and I don't. So give us, give us a little bit of respect that we have our employees' interest primarily in our students' safety, and we take it seriously. That's our job. We've had a lot of rhetoric about arming teachers, and nobody, we have never discussed a policy to arm teachers, and I don't think we're going to. My vote against this motion is this resolution has facts in it that are, has information that's factually incorrect, and I, like Chair Messenger, do not want to oppose a bill that clearly, it's sitting in House messages, it passed the Senate, it is a good bill, it allows each individual school board to make this decision, and I would not want to oppose something that tells my colleagues in Dixie County what they can and cannot do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopes. Now, I want to repeat that, you know, two weeks ago, we've heard much of this, and I don't think we need to repeat it. Now, okay. Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The representation has been made that the resolution that was prepared by Attorney David Minor and by Attorney Reverend James T. Golden, and reviewed by Attorney James Dye, who is the attorney for the school board, the representation has been made that that was poorly drafted and poorly done, and I am personally offended by that, except for the fact that that accusation was made by somebody who was not an attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Hopes, you're out of order.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? I am going to vote yes for many reasons. But I think the main reason is in the last paragraph of Board Member Golden's motion. And this is where you get into the resolutions. This is where the board takes a stand. There may be arguments about whether it's a good bill or a bad bill, or that it's great because it gives, you know, options for, you know, counties and all of that, but what this really comes down to, in my opinion, is the stand that this board, if a majority agrees, you know, takes with respect to arming teachers. And that last paragraph I'm going to read again. And finally, be it resolved that the school board of Manatee County, Florida, be given the option to decide whether the, that should the school board of Manatee County be given the option to decide whether the Manatee County School Board will permit classroom teachers to carry firearms while on school property, it will choose not, it will choose not to allow classroom teachers to carry firearms while on school property. That's the bottom line, that this board is going to say in its position is that teachers shall not be allowed to have firearms on school property. Bottom line. And I see it, you know, tonight, at this moment, that's what we're going to vote on. So I think we've discussed it. Hearing no further discussion, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor of what I've just read in this motion by Board Member Golden, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries three. It is now the resolution of Manatee County School Board. The teachers will not be allowed, you know, to carry guns if we have that. Okay. The next item.
Before we move off of that, just a piece of housekeeping.
Yes, sir.
The administration will need to sign, assign a number to this resolution so it can be indexed.
Okay, it will be indexed. I will be signing it. The Superintendent will be signing, you know, this resolution. Okay. Thank you, Council, you know, Dye. The next item of business, is new business, is approval of a service agreement between the school district of Manatee County and the University of Central Florida. We'll pause here, let.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Okay, okay. Okay, it's been suggested, we're going to take a five-minute recess right now. We'll resume, I got it, what is it, eight, seven thirty-five? Let's resume at seven forty-five, okay? We are taking a recess for ten minutes till seven forty-five. We are taking a recess for ten minutes till seven forty-five.
All right.
Okay. University of South Florida.
That's a one-dollar fine.
Okay, okay, are we all here? Okay, we'll bring this back to order, and we left, we left off with, under new business and non-consent items, approval of service agreement between the school district of Manatee County and University of Central Florida in the amount of $31,250. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the service agreement between the school district of Manatee County and the University of Central Florida for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $31,250.
So moved.
Been moved by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a second? Seconded by Board Member Hopes. Discussion.
Oh, wait a second. Maybe Vice Chair Messenger, an alum of UCF, wants to second it.
It's all yours.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
You're just jealous.
Okay, we have a catfight going on here.
You know, like a moment.
Okay. The superintendent, would you like to make some comments concerning this contract?
Well, I appreciate the board's support. This is our beginning stage of our community partnership school that we saw a presentation on, on the workshop. We will use them to facilitate our process, and I really am looking forward to the great things that are going to come from this agreement.
Okay. Spoken like a true University of Central Florida graduate.
You are correct, sir.
Okay. Now, is there a conflict there or not? But, okay, I don't think so. Okay, is there any other discussion? The chair hearing, the chair will call the question, excuse me, Board Member Kennedy?
I was late getting in, Mr. Chair. I just want to let folks know if they are watching this now, or if they watch this meeting later and they are not sure what we are talking about, I would suggest you go back to the workshop. We had a long presentation at the workshop and a good discussion about it, and I will say it again, I want to thank the superintendent for her leadership on this issue, and we are about to embark on the process of changing a neighborhood in Bradenton, and that's, makes me feel like my time on this board is very much worthwhile, so.
It is a great thing. This is part of a great thing, and the superintendent deserves a lot of credit, you know, for helping to, you know, put it together, you know, to have a community school. Board Member Kennedy, you know, has put a lot of work into it and connections, and I think this community can be, you know, proud of the efforts that have been made and where we're going with this. So with that being said, the chair is going to call a question. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. It carries unanimously five-zero. Thank you very much. The, I think where we're at now is the addition of an item of business that came up at the start of the meeting, and my understanding, it's, I don't know if it's written down, maybe the clerk can read it back to us, the item that we approved by motion to add to the agenda at the start of the meeting. Can the clerk read that?
Approval to authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with Accenture not to exceed $100,000.
Okay, we have, okay. Miss, Board Member Hopes has made that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Okay, discussion. Or just, let me, let me ask, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning this?
As I said, I have not properly viewed the contract and gone through our process with Mr. Titlebaum, so at this time, I can't submit the contract because it's not ready for that. But once we've done our due diligence and have everything proper, that is the expectation that we are going to contract to hire additional people to come in and support a couple of modules that we know have not been built so that we can finish out our close of business. Then at some time, we do need to assess the system to have a plan and a timeline moving forward. That is the expectation, but I do not have a contract ready to submit tonight.
Okay, well, my question is, do you have a recommendation concerning this item of business? Are you recommending that we approve it or not?
Well, I definitely do need to enter into an agreement, but I would imagine you want to see the contract before I submit it or get it authorized for approval. So if the board would rather do that, since those were some of the prior discussions with our auditors and so forth, that you need to see and vet and so forth, we could go through that process. We could call an emergency meeting if you wanted to do that, but I don't have the contract ready for submission tonight, but I will need to enter into an agreement with them.
Okay. Further comment?
Yes.
Let me, okay.
I'm so sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, you're out of order. You're, excuse me.
I made the motion, but that's okay.
Okay. What I, what I wanted to ask is, are we talking about $100,000 because that exceeds the $49,999?
Yes, I can't authorize, I can't. I can't do that without board authority.
I see. So the real issue here is that we're trying to get around the $49,999 deal, so.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hopes, you have some comments you'd like to make concerning...
Yes, as the maker of the motion, I, the, should the superintendent work out an agreement that she's comfortable with if we do not give her the authority to enter into the agreement? And as she said, you know, she would circulate that agreement to all of us, but she would have that authority to enter into this agreement and bring these resources in as soon as she's able to get an agreement that she's comfortable with. If we don't do that, then we would have to have a meeting. It would have to be noticed, and in the meantime, we could possibly lose two weeks of work trying to solve a critical problem, especially with the internal accounts. The internal accounts needs to be set up so monies can be moved from one account to the other as appropriate, and we're not able to do that right now. So because, this would be a one-time increase in her spending authority for a specific firm for a specific topic, and that is what we are doing because we're not going to meet for another three weeks, and by then she could have these assets on the ground and be working on these critical problems. So that's really what the motion is, and I'm confident that the superintendent can work out an agreement to get that work done. out an agreement to get that work done, and she can certainly share it with us, but this, this avoids any delay, any further delay in getting the help that she needs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hope's. I will vote no. I will vote no because this goes against everything that the Auditor General has criticized about our doing business, that we haven't done, you know, due consideration to, to business. And before, I want to give, you know, authority to our superintendent for, you know, something of this nature and this amount. I feel incumbent upon our duties, you know, to see the contract, you know, to determine I, that I believe it's in the best interest of the school district. And it may be that a lot of our problems that we've had during the last couple of years is that we have not been a board that looks carefully at the contracts that this district enters into, and I think it's time to stop. I don't think it's putting the district in any kind of jeopardy to say that Superintendent Saunders, if through your, you know, discussions with this outfit, you come to a conclusion that there is a, a contract that is in the best interest of this school district, that you would contact me, and I could call a special meeting of this board, you know, for the specific purpose of reviewing the proposed contract and to decide whether the board or the district, you know, should enter into this contract. I don't think that's would cause, be reason for undue delay if it had to be done, you know, then and there. Otherwise, it would be approved at the next meeting. But I, I think it's disregarding our duties and what the people expect us to do, you know, to just say, "Well, yeah, we're going to give you $100,000 to do with this. You, in good faith, you know, believe it's in the best interest with the board, the elected representatives, out of the picture entirely." So I'm going to vote no for those reasons. Mr. Chair. Okay, Board Member Golden.
I too will, will be voting no, if for no other reason than ever since I've been here, all I've heard are about decisions that were made on day one that we'll regret it later because we didn't have enough information, we didn't have all the information we needed, we didn't have all the input. There were unexpected unintended consequences that came up, and at some point, we have to wean ourselves away from shooting from the hip, or shooting from the lip, or whatever, whatever you want to call it. I just think that we need to be more deliberative than that. And I only have one question, how long has this been brewing? I mean, for, for two weeks to make that kind of a difference between now and the next meeting, how long has this been happening? How?
You mean, how long have I had the contract? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. You said you got there the day. How long have these discussions been going on, and how, how long have we been engaged in trying to enter into an agreement with Accenture? Is it a month or two months or?
A few weeks.
Okay, so a few weeks. So two more weeks makes it a whole, a month. Okay, and I, I don't see that, that sense of urgency unless the Chair says after you've reviewed it.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy?
Thanks, I'm going to support this for a couple of reasons. Number one, I have faith in the superintendent. She's been dealing with this on a daily basis, I'd say seven-day-a-week basis, for a while now, and what concerns me is, is our internal audit report has been very clear that there are some very time-sensitive issues coming as far as reporting to the state, which will affect funding that we will receive. I also know, because of the way the superintendent works, before she executes any contract, she will sit down with each of us individually to talk about it, to see where we are. So even if we're not in a meeting to approve it, she will get a sense of where the five of us are when she sits down with us. So I think your, your points are both well-taken, but I think this is a special situation due to the time-sensitive nature, and I have confidence in the superintendent and the way she works. So I'm not, I'm not really concerned about an audit finding on this one. But your points are well-taken. We, we need to, we need to, once we put out all the fires and stop the bleeding and we get the patients stabilized, then we can start looking at their long-term, at the long-term health of the project.
Good, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Messenger, do you wish to weigh in on this?
Just vote.
Okay.
I have listened to all your conversations. I've gone back and forth several times, sitting up here.
Mr. Chair, can I just, can I say one thing?
Sure. Superintendent.
If you would like, if you want to put the caveat before the contract moves forward, I can definitely ensure that I do just what Mr. Kennedy voiced, have a meeting, submit the contract to each of you, go over it either in person or on the phone, just so that you feel comfortable before it's, before it's executed, if you choose.
And, and also remind you that as Chairman, you have to sign any agreement over $50,000. So we have confidence that before you sign it, you'll be comfortable with it.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
I'd just like to ask the attorney a question, if it's all right.
Okay. Board, Board Member Golden, you have some questions for our counsel?
What, what I just heard us agree to is that the five of us individually are going to be briefed by the superintendent, literally as a poll, to determine whether or not we are going to ratify what we are...
No, because we're all aware.
That we want to ratify what we are mulling over here tonight, as opposed to the superintendent simply saying to the Chair, "We need to do something, and we need to have a meeting." I mean, to me, that just really takes us down the road for this sunshine law, and I'm, and I'm afraid of that more than anything. I just got to be honest with you. I just don't ever want to be accused of, of that. And it looks like we're using her to be the emissary between all of us for this particular issue, not just to discuss what's on an upcoming agenda. So let me be clear about that. If this was an agenda item, which is what she briefs us on, those are board briefings for the matters that are coming up in the next agenda. What we are saying here is, it's not on this agenda. Well, we put it on this agenda, but what we're going to do is we're going to use her to go around and poll us and see, and I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to be caught in that.
Okay, Attorney Dye, do you have some comments on the questions that?
Yes.
Board Member Golden raises.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Reverend Golden bringing it up because I wanted to address it before you voted. The superintendent cannot poll the board outside of a public meeting to determine whether to vote or to approve the contract or not, because, because that would be, in essence, a meeting outside the sunshine. Even if she met individually with each board member, if she's counting votes in order to decide whether to approve the contract or not, that would be a sunshine, a meeting in violation of the sunshine. What, the way I interpret the motion, however, is that the board is granting her, if the motion passes, the board is giving her additional spending authority to exercise her independent judgment as to whether to approve the contract or not. Meeting with the board, as long as she doesn't interpret that, that individual meetings with board members as something, some switch that must fall before she can approve the contract, I don't think there's a sunshine violation. She can take into account individual, individual board members' comments, counsel, suggestions, one way or the other, but those are not substitutes for her own independent judgment on whether the contract should be approved or not. And if, and if both sides, both the board member side and the superintendent's side conduct those meetings, if they occur in that nature, I don't think there's going to be a sunshine issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dye. Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you. Board members, I want to apologize for taking us down this road, because that was not my intention to say that this contract will only get signed after she talks to all five of us. My intention and my statement was that she will keep us updated on the process, because with this vote, we are authorizing the contract, we are enabling her to act. So she doesn't need our approval after tonight. But Reverend Golden, your points are well-taken, because what I said was wrong, but it was not what I was thinking in my head. So, Mr. Dye, I apologize for taking us down this road, but yeah, this is not a, this is not a straw poll of the board after tonight. It's, my, my point was that she will, as always, keep us well-informed of how the process is going. So, sorry about that, guys. End gal.
Well, I, I have great faith in the superintendent. I think I've demonstrated that, you know, repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. But I also have great faith in, you know, the, the judgment involved in something like this, $100,000, should be a board, you know, decision. I think also it's important that, and I think the community expects, that decisions, you know, like this will be the result of, you know, board contemplation, board discussion, maybe, and at least, and the majority of the board, you know, publicly saying, "Okay, this is a good thing," and that the public, you know, has an opportunity to see what it's like and maybe weigh in on the wisdom of spending $100,000. The motion would not allow that, or at least would allow not doing that or providing that, the public not having a voice and examining, you know, what's going on, or to hear our comments, or to understand what's going on. You know, what I have suggested is a way, you know, to, I think, expeditiously address and if the board decides, approves, the, the contract and the expenditure, but also allow for the public, you know, to at least have some notice that we're going to have some special meeting, and we're going to talk about a proposed contract that may involve $100,000, and, you know, people might come in and say, "This is the greatest thing the board's ever done," or "This is maybe the dumbest thing the board has ever done," but the public hasn't been shut out. And the superintendent, you know, has the benefit of some, you know, thinking and care, you know, of five other people in, in making that decision. And so approving this motion takes away, you know, that. If the superintendent comes to me and says, "I think it's really important, you know, and we've heard, you know, the plea, "Well, we, we need to move on with, you know, taking care of ERP and get a contract and all this good stuff real quickly, and, you know, we're not going to have a board meeting for three months." We might not even have an acceptable, you know, proposal, you know, in, or excuse me, three weeks, you know, in, in three weeks. But if she were to come in, you know, you know, call me in a week and said, "Mr. Minor, I'm emailing you a proposal, and I think this is something that is in the best interest of the district to get accepted, you know, by the district and by the board," and the next thing I would do is, you know, call a special meeting, and hopefully, there'd be at least three board members, and the public would know about it, and we publish it, you know, on our, on our website, and we get together here, and we'd have, call a meeting to order. We have one item of business, whether or not we're going to approve a proposed contract, you know, between the school board and the, you know, VND, you know, for, you know, up to $100,000. It comes with a strong recommendation of the superintendent that we need to have it done now for the betterment of this school district, and we might ask her some comments about clause 4B or whatever, and there might be some member of the public who comes up and says, "This is the greatest thing since sliced bread," or "The worst thing since, you know, poisoned bread," or something like that, but the public would have the right to do it. And I, I think that, you know, we've certainly received criticism for shutting the, the public out of, you know, decisions like this, and we've been criticized by the Attorney General for not being a board active in looking at contracts, and I, I just think that we're doing everything wrong to approve this, and so that's what I have to say about it, and yes, okay.
I just have a question.
Yes.
For Mrs. Saunders.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot of conversation about how quickly things could have done, so my question to you is, how quickly does your process move once you get a contract like that? How quickly do you think you'll know whether you're going to move forward with that contract? And on average, not necessarily, you know, just on average, how quickly do things like that move forward?
Of course, with anything of, with a sense of urgency, if they had the language and all the information in it as needed, we could get it through all of our processes within a day, so, but, yeah.
That's all I needed to know.
Thank, thank you, Board Member, Vice Chair, Messenger. The other thing, okay, if you get a proposal, you know, you're talking on the phone and send things before, and you say, "Okay, I think we can work with, you know, this, this proposal," and they say, "Yeah, okay, this is a good thing." Our attorney, we like, I, just goes to purchasing, okay? Goes to purchasing, goes to attorney, and they say, "Okay, you know, it looks pretty good," and, and you think it's pretty good, you call me, "I've got something pretty good." Everybody says it's pretty good. We call a special meeting, we don't shut out the public, we let them know, and at least three of us get together, you know, right here, we look, we, we've looked at it, and we might have some questions. Now, I, I'm saying, I've looked at, you know, some prior contracts, and I'm saying, "What the hell did we do as a board?"
Mr. Chairman, can I call the question?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're out of order, Mr. Hope's. Thank you very much. And I've looked at, and why, why did it not have this, or why did it have that? And it was because there wasn't enough board review seriously about contracts for lots of money that this district entered into, and I, I think it's a bad habit, and it's a, a habit needs to stop, and I think it ought to stop now. So we're going to, we've had, I guess.
Sorry, I have one more question now.
Sure.
Do you mind?
No.
Like, he kind of brought it up now. I told you, I go back and forth, guys up here, sorry. How long do you have to notice a special meeting? How long must the notice be? Is it seven days like everything else, or is something different?
It's, it's a tough question, because there's conflicting regulations. The policy says you have to have the agenda up seven days ahead of the meeting, but the actual notification doesn't have to be more than 48 hours, I believe.
So if we decided that, if, if the Chair decided that there was supposed to be a special meeting, it could be done in 48 hours? Or it would have to be done in seven days? Which one is it?
Seven days, I think.
Seven days.
You have to go with the longer in order to be able to satisfy both regulations.
Okay, Mr. Titlebaum.
Unless it's an emergency, which this would not qualify as an emergency, so, we could hold emergency meetings with 48 hours' notice, in a true emergency situation.
Right, okay.
Why, okay, now, so Mr. Titlebaum is defining a situation that is being posited as, well, it's an emergency, we got to get it done, you know, that the reputation and efficiency of this district is at risk if we don't even in advance, you know, give authority for doing something, but it's not an emergency for calling a meeting. That seems like a conflict.
If I may explain, if you were presented with an emergency, an emergency situation, something that you must take action on, that would, you're exactly right, Mr. Minor, put the district in peril, then technically, you would be able to call it within 48 hours, but it had to be a true emergency situation. Technically, as well, the superintendent could sign something on an emergency and come back for board ratification still at another board meeting as well. By statute, under 6A, she, her authority is limited to $50,000. Anything above that $50,000 requires the board to take, to take action on it. That's by our statute, as well as our, consistent with our policy. But absent facing a true emergency, it's generally, it would be generally one week, and I agree with Mr. Dye.
Okay, calendar, of calendar days, okay. So what we're talking about, if she got something tomorrow that seemed like, you know, something really good for the district, that I guess next Wednesday or Thursday, it would be okay with putting out some kind of notice to everybody and have, and get it done, you know, by that time. have, and get it done, you know, by that time, because it's not something that just has to be done, you know, like Friday of this week. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right. Any further?
I, I do have another comment.
Okay.
Okay, and I mean this in no offense, but understand that this is an international firm. Once that agreement's signed, they have to, I, they have to deploy those resources. So, you are talking about potentially delaying getting the resources in to really deal with a significant problem by at least two weeks, it could be three weeks. It's not just us, it's, it, you've got to move people around, these firms are not going to drop somebody in the next day. So, if we delay by seven or 10 days giving her the authority, we are delaying by almost three weeks of potentially getting resources in that should have been here two years ago. And, and so, it's, and then we need to take up, you know, how we conduct business, because that, that's the point. The point is not, look, I don't know how to tell you, we have got significant problems with this system. It is, it is creating significant problems for the superintendent to do her job, for us to know where money is, for us to get money in the right accounts, because things just weren't billed, and she can sign $50,000 worth of work anytime she wants to, and this $100,000, we just went through a consent agenda that approved millions of dollars, and there was no debate, there was no public discussion, there were a few comments, and we need to empower the superintendent to operate this district and fix these problems. They are not going away without talented resources, and we do not have the talented resources.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopez. I don't buy your argument a bit. I, I don't buy your argument because you say, well, it's going to maybe a couple of weeks for them to get together. That would be true even if she had that authority. So, that doesn't, this may add, you know, a week, but that would be all. Okay, let's call the question. All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Hopez, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. I think it passes four to one. Set, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Next item of business, legal, okay. Workshop item request, okay? Vice Chair Messenger.
Not to pile him on, because I know we have a lot on there, but, but we talked about at the workshop today about a governance team and, and a committee type of thing, and I would love just to, for us to really have a good conversation about that, what that would look like, what we'd want to do with that. I think that was really good advice. The other thing, since we're all talking about contracts, and we know that that was part of audit findings, is there something that we could do? I don't know how to word this, or even really the best way to do it, but something so that we can talk about what we want to see in the board work, what we want to see in the contracts, what we think are important things, what we think are important things even in the executive summary? I mean, I know that's what the district presents to us, but if we want to have the best information, I think maybe we need to have that kind of conversation between us about the, our expectations. I don't think, you know, we can say, oh, I don't know, I just feel like we need to have that conversation. I don't know the best way to phrase that, but just to have the conversation about, you know, we've got two lawyers up here, but you all have different opinions even on that. Maybe we could have a conversation about what things we think are important in contracts, what things we think are important in the executive summaries, those types of things, so that we make sure we're getting the information that we need in order to make the best decisions.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I would like to re-up my request for, as mentioned by Mr. Gribalina, the energy audit. The last list that we got from Michelle on our kind of queue of workshop items, it is showing, sorry, I just had it right in front of me. Granted, we've had some other things going on, and I know this is a, this is not a front burner issue right now, but it was, it was requested originally back in December, so I would like to offer a solution. I really actually thought our start today at 1:30 was a good thing, and so maybe to kind of clear this queue of workshop items, that we as a board maybe extend our workshops a little bit so we can fit some more items in. I thought Michelle's idea today of having kind of time, kind of unofficial time certain for items really helped us move along. I didn't mind getting cut off in mid-sentence because it was time to, it was time to move along.
No, I wouldn't do that.
So, it's just a suggestion, I don't know how you all feel, but I don't mind coming in early on workshop days so that we can start moving through some of these items. And I, I have another thing about energy and solar, but I'll save that for my, my board comment. So, that's just, I, I just wanted to ask for that.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. The legal department update, Mr. Dye.
No, Mr. Titlebaum has an item.
Okay. Okay, it's going to be rather factual, but right to the point. There's been several meetings with Cyber HTC, informally to resolve all matters within the district itself. Demands have been made by Cyber for certain payments, for invoices. I will put opinion in as well as make it factual. Making a long story very short, on February 27th, superintendent wrote to Cyber regarding their claim for amounts due and owing, and as in everything else, she laid out what the board, this board has approved by, by referring to both contract as well as statute. When the board has to approve something for monetary expenditures, the board approves this, and you don't exceed board authority at any time. Now, Cyber's billing exceeded board authority. Not only the issues, and this is fact, not opinion, could we not trace Cyber's billing to make sure they in fact worked? So, I have issues with them justifying what they actually are billing the district for, and as board members, I think you would as well. In addition to that, anything that exceeds your authority violates the statute. So, the superintendent kindly wrote a letter, February 27th, which I have copies of right here, that talked about what you, good members of the board did from March 8th, 2016 to December 13th, all those initial contracts, the change orders, the additional chain, change orders as well. As we get to the second page of it, we talk about 6A, point, 6A dash 1.0127 through 10, purchasing policies of the state of Florida. And those policies summarized basically say that something has to be board-approved above the $50,000, and that's codified in our school board policy by Neola that you board members had voted on, 6320, that gave that superintendent $49,999.99 to approve something. Other than that, the follow statute has to go to this board, and board approval, anything above $50,000 goes to this board. So, when we look at task order number one specifically, it says that Cyber will not perform services not described in this tax order unless a change order has been approved, and members of the board who approves the change, who approves change orders, not the superintendent, she recommends it, but you as the board. So, ultimately, only the board can approve any changes to contract or monetary amounts. Well, as we try to reconcile what's been billed versus what you've been approved, can I tell you something? I've got problems, because they've exceeded board authority, and they cannot justify having done the work to not just Mr. Cosmac, but our predecessors despite our meetings. As a result, the superintendent kindly led them down the primrose path, exactly telling them verbatim what is outstanding and why they're not paying any further money to them. She told us, she said specifically, what was left from Campus Solutions, if they are able to justify their bill, and what was left on this ERP project, if they're able to justify their bill, and she sent it out on February 27th. Last Wednesday, I was contacted by an attorney for the firm of Ossley McMullen. He told me he was representing HTC Global Solutions. Respectfully, what did I do? I told him I'd get right back to him, and I asked him to please note, to please solidify his representation in a notice of appearance for me. Bear in mind, this is not a notice of claim under 768.28, this is contractual, I'm not going to even discuss the applicability, but he made a demand for amounts due and owing of 779,383.43, and they're trying to throw in, they're trying to throw in statutory interest as well. So, with that in mind, members of this board, I am, I am briefing you on the actions on behalf of this school district that I sanction 100%. This, this, I 100% will tell you, properly stated, board, through board documentation, as well as their demand, which I feel is without merit. It exceeds board authority, and that they contractually agreed to. The contractually, as I'm going to repeat myself to you, they stated that they will not do any work unless absent an approved change order, and you good members of this board never approved a change order for the amounts that they're billing us, and that is my legal update.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum.
Thank you.
Okay, next is instructional update, Superintendent Saunders.
These are positive.
What?
Sorry, Superintendent.
These are positive updates.
Okay, well.
HR's done a great job putting together our first teacher fair of hiring for the season. It will be this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Bradenton Convention Center. So, all of those that are listening, that are looking for a teaching job for next year, we're hiring. So, Saturday morning, be there. Also, I would like to let those in, in the community know that on Thursday, the 25th, it is Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day, so if you are interested in that, we have also noticed information to school sites for that activity. We have a number of things going on, it's the end of the year, so the 25th also, we have the migrant awards at Lakewood Ranch Auditorium at 7:00. We also have on April 27th, Math Superstars at MTC Campus, that's at 9:30 a.m. You could go there, and then to the teacher fair. April 29th, we have our Arts Alive with Manatee Performing Arts Center at 5:30. That's going to be a great event with Julie Habeer and the curriculum team putting that on. May 2nd is our K-12 Art Exhibit at the Art Center of Manatee, that's at 5:00. And May 6th is our Congressional Art Reception at Ringling Museum. So, we have an action-packed calendar, and remember, May 15th starts our first graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Saunders. Okay, board comments. The Board Member Hopez.
I like Mr. Kennedy's point about extending workshops, because we do have a lot of work to do, but my suggestion is that we have workshops on a separate day from board meetings. It becomes evident that as we draw out into the night after very long workshops, sometimes our, our effectiveness fails, falls off. So, I would like us to have a discussion about restructuring how and when we meet so that we can make the most effective use of our time, with all of our minds being sharp when we make decisions. I have found that when we have these long workshops, even though they're needed, and then we go into our business meeting, I don't think we're as effective as we would be if we were fresh when we have our business meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hopez. Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
All right. I, I guess I'll start, as long as we're, we're talking about how we do business, I, I'll start with that. And I had a request of the chair, I thought, I appreciate that today's workshop was moved down here because we had so many presentations, because I find that this room is just much more amenable to presentations. We can see our monitors, we can, we can see the presenter face to face. I think when we have to have a conversation amongst the five of us, I think upstairs is perfect, but I really, this is one board member asking, I really prefer them down here. And to that point, just putting out there, food for thought, should we maybe have our audit committee meetings in here, and our financial oversight committee meetings in this room? It's already set up for recording, it's not an additional burden on staff at the PSC or upstairs. I just want to put it out there as food for thought. I think it just might help us work better, it might help the committees work better. Okay, I have a short term, a medium term, and a long term topic I wanted, I will be really quick, I promise. Short term, I would, I'm not sure exactly what the proper process is for a board member, but the school district, and I've already talked to Cindy about this, but the, the school district a few years ago had what's called a cultural competency committee. I was not on that committee, but, and so I'm not really sure why it kind of tailed off, but I think it would just be a good idea for us to kind of reignite that cultural competency committee, just as a matter of like, good practice of a school district. We've talked about issues of, we, we touch on cultural competency all the time, and I think having kind of that citizens committee or a district and citizens committee to talk about how we can be more culturally competent would be a good thing. Medium term item, as you're all probably aware, the, the census is taking place next year, and there is an effort afoot to make sure that people are counted and to get the word out to people, and I think that we as a school district have a very wide reach communications-wise, and I'm sure we have some parents who could use maybe some part-time income working for the United States Census Bureau, they're paying like 20-something dollars an hour, and so if we could find a way to, you know, help get the word out about the importance of the census, about the importance of being counted, there's so many tentacles of funding that are wrapped up in the census, I mean, there are hundreds of thousands probably. Long term, and Glenn, this one's for you, buddy. I am affiliated with an organization called Ready for 100, and it's an environmental group. Locally, it's an environmental group, but there are Ready for 100 chapters all over the country, and what Ready for 100 does in the cities where they are located, they are trying to get a commitment from local governments to commit by 2050 to be using 100% renewable energy. So, I don't know this for sure, so I don't want to say this definitively, but I believe Manatee County would be the first school district to make a commitment to being 100% renewable by 2050. So, want to, want to be a leader? We'd be, I, I'm pretty sure we would be the first one. Now, granted, there's a process that the group goes through to, they reach out to all the commission members or the city council members, in our case, we'd be the first school board, so there's a process, but I just wanted to kind of put that on everybody's radar as a long-term goal for kind of, not just kind of resiliency to climate change, but also just as a matter of good, you know, what's the word? I'm, I'm losing my affectance, Dr. Hopez, I'm, I'm searching for words at this, at this, after all, at this day, but, you know, as, as just a, a, a practice of, or, you know, good business. So, that's, Mr. Chair, that's all I got. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Board Member Golden.
Mr. Chair, I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Vice Chair Messenger.
Just two shout-outs. One shout-out to Julie Habeer, and then everyone else that made the night on 5th happen. It was an awesome event, and I know that a lot of people all worked together, and we had some really great musicians there, and there was yummy-looking food, and tasty, and Mr. Minor took some film.
Some meatballs.
But it was a great event, and so I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work to make that happen. And then the other shout-out is to all of the schools that were represented in the DeSoto Children's Parade, that was this past Saturday. It was a great event, there were lots of ri, lots of floats, and my daughter got so many beads that she couldn't stand up, and handfuls of candy, and so it was a great event, and it was just great to see how many schools were there, and I really felt like there was a lot more schools this year, it seemed like there was more schools this year than last year, which was really great, it's nice to see an uptick in schools being part of that, so it was a great event, so, all right, that's it.
Okay, now, thank you, Board Vice Chair, Messenger. I started laughing when Mr. Kennedy said a, a short one, a medium, and a long. I don't know if they even published it, but there, there used to be a book about these bad characters. I read it to my kids, you know, dozens of times, and short, and medium, and long, and I don't know how it came about, but that's what I was thinking of when you mentioned short, medium, and long. When you talked about, you know, your, your energy kind of tapering off, and I said, how appropriate, you know, when you're talking. and I said, "How appropriate, you know, when you're talking about renewable energy, to say, 'Well, I need some renewable energy.'"
I need some solar panels.
Yeah, we're, okay, we're gonna try to install them in board members. And I think that was kind of, uh, Board Member Hope's idea, that we have some, um, maybe if we can't get renewable energy, we try to conserve energy a little bit. So, anyway, well, thank you very much. I think the, um, you know, comments about Julie Habeer and all, that was just, uh, really, really wonderful. And, um, I remember in the corner, this kind of pencil drawing. I said, "Jeez, you know, this is more than professional, I mean, this is really, um, some girl at Lakewood Ranch who put it together." It's just a beautiful piece of art. We have some great artists in our, in our school district, and it's kind of fun, and the food's good, and, uh, it's a real pleasure. What, um, we got a few things coming up, I think, that'll keep us hopping. And, uh, that's about it for me. And, uh, with that being said, I'm going to call this meeting to an end and adjourn, and thank you all for coming. Okay, we're outta here before nine.